Go ahead and call the orders, the regular council meeting on Monday, August 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the indication of the presidential meetings.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to have you serve with you. We pray that you give us a guidance and wisdom that we need. Continue to be with each of us to make the right decisions and help the city to grow and to take care of all of this business without any problem. For me, I see things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
The President of the United States of America, the United Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great resources for all.
Before I ask for motion for the approval of the agenda, I'd like to amend the agenda that had in Citizens Business Verbal, item number three, Stan Jazinski, talking about the 911 proceedings. And now I'd ask the council for approval of the agenda.
Move to the agenda from the meeting of August 25th, 2025.
Motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Now I'd ask the council for motion for the approval of minutes of the regular meeting executive session of August 4th, 2025.
I make motion here, we approve the minutes of August 4th, 2025.
Sorry. You have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Do we have an nominations for recognition from the council committee?
Mr. Mayor, I would like, I received a phone call from Steve Ladwick, and he would like to nominate this coal car. So I found out, and Bernie Terry is the one that plants this coal car all the time. So it is absolutely gorgeous this year, as are all the coal cars. Even the banks, they're all around town, they're beautiful. But he wanted this one recognized, so.
So we're giving nomination for recognition to Bernie Terry?
Right.
Is she affiliated with any of the?
She is affiliated with the garden club, but I don't know which one can. I don't know what it's called.
I think it's Robert.
Your service.
But, but we are not doing the fire club, we're doing Bernie Terry because she plants this.
Okay, so specifically for Bernie Terry? And that is the fine looking gold car? So nomination for recognition of her? Is there any other nominations for recognition? Hearing on, we'll move on to certificate of recognition. Mason Kaiser with tough trucks. And sorry for the voice, everybody, I've been a little under the leather. I don't think I'm. Hey, thanks.
Thanks you guys, I appreciate it.
We appreciate you bringing an awesome event for the community. And it's been well received by the public. Yeah, we really appreciate your event.
Yeah, we appreciate the town, we appreciate the volunteers we've done, so it helps out a bunch. So, thank you guys.
Moving on to Citizens Business Verbal, item number one, First Northern Bank, Mike Morrison, yes?
First off, I'd like to say thank you, council, for having me. Mayor Owens and I had a conversation about, oh, two, three weeks ago concerning some investments and opportunities to give you more return on the citizens' money and the city's money. For those who don't know me, I'm Mike Morrison, I'm the market president here for First Northern Bank. This is Louise Stiff, she's the market president, our student branch manager. And Kim Pryner, IT, also involved with the leases and things like that for many years. We realize that you have opportunities, Loyola Star, WGIF class. But I'd like to walk you through a couple of logics on continuing to keep your deposit in First Northern. First off, our bank has been a part of this community since 1924. We were First State Bank in Newcastle, then we merged with First Northern Bank. They are the oldest bank in Wyoming, founded in 1885, before Wyoming was even a state. Formed by two family members, Holt and McBride. They still own the bank, they're still there today, the trenches with us. We're a firm believers that the tax dollars raised in our community need to stay here in our community. We have significant asset investments and payroll in this community, all which generate various, various sales and real estate tax dollars that you're investing. We don't want payroll just here in Newcastle, 20 people. Our employees are the ones that are serving on your boards and committees, and they give back to the community. And there's some examples right there in the handouts that we just gave you. The community comes to us for various fundraising donations to make our community better. You can see in that handout for the last two years how many dollars we've given throughout the community to different organizations. One that isn't on there, that First State Bank gave about 25 years ago, was the park at the head of Main Street. We put $75,000 into that, we revitalized it, and then we handed it over to the city of Newcastle. Banks, unlike these other options that have come and approached you before, are, we are subject to state and federal regulations and regulators. Banks, unlike these other options, are required by law to provide security for all our public deposits. So we pledge bonds and treasuries, also municipal, our tax-free bonds and things like that, to protect your deposits so they are not at any risk of being lost. Also, we are required by federal law to invest in our communities, that's the Community Reinvestment Act. And we have to invest in underprivileged and underserved areas of communities and counties which we have a presence in, which we do. We regulate it every year, and we come in and examine us for that, make sure we are reinvesting back into our communities. We're a business in this community. Our mission is to support our local businesses, which we do, through loans and things like that. We realize that you guys need to be competitive, you know, investing the money properly or trying to get the best that you can. It's a fiduciary responsibility of you to get the highest return. However, we believe we have sound logic to keep our money outlined, is what I just stated before. When you invest with us and keep your money with us, it's 100% liquid. You can come over the next day and get your funds out. Other investments that you might be looking at might take two weeks to get your funds out. And we do not charge you a fee when you invest with us. No transaction fee. One thing I do want to just state, and it's dear to my heart, and with Kim and Louise, we've been here damn near our whole lives. This is our community, we don't want to see anything happen to it, we don't want to see anything happen to the citizens' money. We want to protect it. We have a big risk of disvolting, so we have a lot to say. I'm going to turn it over to Louise, she's going to have a couple more figures to tell you and discuss.
On the one page, you have the second page, I guess it is. It has First Northern Bank of Wyoming. Like you said, no fees if you invest with us, it's 100% guaranteed. Your FDIC coverage goes up to $250,000, and the bank pledges securities to cover deposits over the $250,000. You look on the alternatives, just something to think about. Are there fees disclosed if you go elsewhere to invest? Do you have the FDIC coverage? You could have a potential loss of principal if you don't have that. As mentioned, you have same-day liquidity on your money market accounts. Is there an early penalty if you go someplace else, that's something you need to look for? How much is it? We don't have a minimum investment. They sometimes require you to have a minimum investment. Now, you have talked about money market accounts, we do offer CDs also, certificates of deposit. We have a fixed rate term, low minimum balance, various maturities from 91 days to 60 months. And if you need to facilitate some special days to budget or anything like that, we could sure do that for you without a penalty. So, you know, if you're looking at alternatives, you might look to see where your money's being invested, it's now in your community.
I don't know that there's a whole lot I can add, other than we are, we are the community bank. And we are also a business in our community, and of course, we are, you know, we are looking for a profit as well. However, our bank, I feel, is well vested in our community. I mean, I can be able to look at some things that, I went through this afternoon and just did a quick recap, and I just took donations over $500 and, you know, put them down here in the last year. I serve on the donation committee for the Newcastle branch. You know, we meet every two weeks, and we've always got, you know, somebody looking for an auction item, a basket. We donate a basket, we donate cash, we donate, and there are, we rarely turn anything down. If it is, it's probably because it's not local. And so, you know, our management is very generous in that respect. I have a lot of respect for them in that, you know, they, they don't have to do that. And so, our roundup program, you know, we have quarterly roundup where we match the roundup program, and then we donate it out to community entities, we need to work up the lunch program, double bases, veterans talking to veterans, the museum district, and that's, that's every quarter. You know, that's a little hard to gauge as to how much it is because it depends on, you know, what the program, it comes in on the program. But it's all coming back into the community, you know, the bank is matching those funds. And so, that's, you know, that's money off and coming back into our community. When First Northern first took over, one of the first things that they did was, you know, what do you sure community need? And we identified, you know, the sound system at the fairgrounds. So they made a large donation for the sound system for the fairgrounds. I think there was a $4,000 donation for equipment at the, in the egg building, because they were, you know, lacking in tools and things like that. The Friends Affair, we did a large donation, donation for the playground for the kids out there in the gazebo. You know, support the livestock option, 4-H. We, we have our community events, but we try to incorporate that, what we do those events with, you know, local 4-H, 4-H groups, the swim team, you know, and help them fundraise. We work with the, put on Pan Pay Breakfast with our volunteer firefighters. I don't know that it's widely known, but we provide all the food for that. They do the cooking, and then we, and then, and then when they put the food out, and then we help them serve and all of that. And so, you know, we're vested in, in our community. A few years ago, we used to do a lot of leases, and other banks wouldn't do it. And First State and First Northern do the municipal leases, because they're not exactly, historically, they weren't very profitable. You know, because of the low rates, if you can look at one, at least 1%. And we continue to do that so that we can support, support our, you know, our communities. As CRA officer, I look at all the loans, all the investments, donations, to make sure that we are investing locally in our community. But the other thing is, is, and I think my feature is, you know, we have 20 employees, and we are, we are the community. You know, we're on the boards and committees and all of that. So, so, you know, when you put hard figures at it, you know, and maybe I understand, every time I do meals on meals, I understand the need to find some way to do something with the streets and all of that. But, you know, I think we're better served with those funds in the community as a whole, as opposed to, you know, for a little more interest in the county. So, I appreciate you giving us a chance to, to him and talk to my Ken, hope that you consider all, you know, all of this as opposed to just a rate, you know, when you're, when you're keeping your money here, you're investing locally. In turn, we're investing in the community. We also don't look at it as a transaction. We look at it as a partnership and a relationship, and not just, you know, we just want our deposit, you know, that is, we want to support the community. With that, please.
I would just like to say thank you for your business over the years. That's greatly appreciated, and I hope we continue to do so. Do you have any questions for us? And if you ever have any questions, we're right across the street.
Yeah, there's that too.
We're always there, so, please, come to visit one-on-one with, with any of us that might be there. If you don't have, don't have a question tonight, we're always there available, so.
Does the council have any questions, First Northern Bank?
So, I had come to you, Mr. Morrison, because I've been, you know, shown resource, Olivia. They have their different programs, and they, and they lock in our investment of 101 programs for an extended period of time, like, you know, 60 to 90 days for a fixed 4.5% interest rate. So when we came here tonight, I thought that, maybe you let us know, like, if we invested, you know, up to $500,000 worth of bank, what would the invest, or the interest rate look like if we invested it here locally?
I would go 3.9 right now.
And that's a fixed interest rate that we would be getting to eat that money in the 60 to 90 days?
Absolutely, yep. We can do whatever you'd like. If you have a project, you know it's coming down six months to the road, and you don't need the funds till then to pay for it, we'll get you a six-month interest, or a CD, okay? If you need, if you got a project that's 24 months or 36 months down the road, we can split that up and give you a little bit better rate, the longer term you go. So, you do have to remember, whenever you have an investment somewhere else, the higher the rate, the higher the risk too. So, you know, with outside investments, so.
Okay, I mean, this, you've given us a lot to think about, so I think I would call for a finance committee meeting, and we could discuss this a little bit more in depth. But I really appreciate you folks coming tonight, and we do appreciate all the things that you do for our community, and, you know, your large employer, and you do a lot of wonderful things. I mean, you did, did you buy a beef, is that, what, 10 gram? Because I would have said, well.
Just a half, no.
Just one more, though.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll get a finance committee together, and then maybe you could even sit in on the finance committee.
Welcome.
I love to, I really appreciate you folks being here tonight. Did anybody have any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Citizens Business Verbal, item number two, Billy Jackson, Jay Pretty coordinates.
I was all going with that. So the order is, I, Sharon and I, I stopped in last week, maybe me, about the streets and stuff. And there was, they showed me, and it was just about the trucks going down the street stuff. For that piece of proposal, and hopefully that's over with the second, it will be over with the second as the bridge is completed, but who knows when that will be. For, for, for the record, I'm not here to represent any other trucker or anything, I'm just kind of here to give my two cents into the, my input into the ordinance I was shown about engine brakes coming down, basically coming down overpass. The ordinance I was shown that night, there was a typo in it, so someone was saying, it was passed, but there was a typo, so you have to go through the readings again. Formal that is, or whatnot.
I think we had caught that first reading changed us.
Well, it wasn't really a typo, right, I believe it was an invalid description.
Yeah, an invalid description, I'm, yeah, I was scared I'd get it wrong. I'm looking at year 16, whatever, cross that off, if I remember correctly, on the first reading.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, please get mine, go ahead.
But like, basically, my, my deal is, you know, I mean, and that night, when I, when I talked to the community and stuff, you know, you know, there was their feeling that coming off the overpass, you can keep it under 30, if you're in the right gear without jakes. And since then, I've, I've been hauling eight about every day since then. You know, I've tested it out, I'm always usually running engine brakes just because of the hazards that bring on that street. I, I turned them off, went down it, yes, for the record, I can keep it under 30. I cannot, I don't have the speed going down it, it's, it is hard, it's still. My, my perspective on it, though, is it's not trying to keep me under 30 in a big truck. It is, man, that, that strip, that line of street, from the top of the bypass down to past Stampede is a very dangerous, kind of an important strip of the road. You know, our high school's right there, you got the neighborhood across, the intersection at the bottom, it's pretty busy. And for me, keep it under 30, I can do that, I can, I can slow down pretty quick. Should come to the stop, I, I need some assistance from the engine brakes. And with the risks of the high school kids, many parents coming out of there, neighborhood coming out, the intersection. I, I don't have 20 years of experience driving truck, but what, a couple years of experience that you have, that intersects that strip is not fun to drive, just because, man, you got basically a four lane right there coming off. A bunch of cars, multiple times I've been, you know, going 30, around 30, and cars zip by me, cut in front of me, just to get in front of the big truck before it cuts down to a two lane, you know? That, that intersections, those two intersections right there with the grade and everything is, I, I prefer that whatever braking is accessible to me. I know jakes are, I mean, some trucks are pretty loud, they're annoying, guys, some guys overuse them, but in that strip of road, I would highly recommend it.
Mr. Jackson, any or?
Yes, sir.
Under this brake break ordinance I've heard, getting ready to pass, this guy has an intersection from South Sunder to Stampede on bypass.
So that's.
So you can't use a brake.
Coming down, so that, that is.
Yes.
Kind of the, you know, kind of the. So you can use them coming off the bypass?
Yes.
Yes. So where can you not use your engine brakes?
South Sunder. Anywhere else that has incorporated, you know, the only place that we're allowed is basically going down bypass.
Is that possible?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, please. South Sunder is being referenced, is right by White High. So the gravel road going down the wind field is actually South Sunder.
So just across the whole bypass, basically down on the backside, this, or, is a US 16 truck route, or ties back in Washington?
That's White High, I understand.
Okay, so I guess you're allowed to use your brake brake in that area that you were concerned about.
Okay, so what, what is, I mean, what's the, I guess, what's the statute, what's the ordinance say?
Well, I just couldn't repeat it for you. Okay, so that was not a typo. So, section 16-11.2, use of engine compression brakes, brake brakes prohibited. No person shall operate or use any vehicle engine compression brake within the corporate city limits of the city, except it shall not be a violation of this section to use any vehicle engine compression brake in the following areas. Item A, from the crossroad of South Sunder and the US 16 truck route to the crossroad of Stampede Street and the US 16 truck route. Violation of this section constitutes misdemeanor punishable by a fine of $50 for any first offense, $100 for any second offense, and for any third or subsequent offense may be punishable by a fine of up to $750. So, basically, that area of concern for you is, is, it's okay to use it.
I guess there's just, I was confused, there's confusion during the community, that sounds, I mean, definitely sounds doable, you know? So, I appreciate it, sorry to the.
Yeah, I thought that was in this print too, when you talked to me about it after the community meeting, but, I mean, it looks, it looks like it fits. So where they don't want the Jake, I guess, is past the signs on the town, which the signs are, are not up yet.
Just working the bypass.
So the signs aren't up yet, so not enforcing it because we don't have signs to mark.
Some are present, laws.
Where you're not 11, but coming into town off 85, and then coming down the hill towards the 408 when you hit the city.
I've got some, sounds doable to me.
Or was that like York Street, or something like that?
York Street is the start of the city limits there. South Summit Avenue, where it intersects with 85, is inside the city limits. And Highway 16 East is at Perry's, the city limits starts. West is Morrison.
Okay, so this, we've got complaints from citizens. One of the things that I think, I think sometimes, even myself, I, I'm a little knee-jerk when it comes to somebody coming to me with a problem. I just immediately jump in the middle of it. We probably could have had a town hall and had a little bit more public feedback, you know, so that, maybe it wouldn't have been just like the few people that had come forward that were annoyed by the Jake break. There might have been a little bit more input. But I also, you know, I, I've talked it from a lot of different sides, and, and, so, anyway, I hope we.
Yeah, sorry for taking your time, something was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm glad you came here.
Yeah, yeah. Got to talk to, got the word from the, the, you had talked about the trucks, trucks down Main Street. And I hope that bridge is done soon, cause none of us wanna go down Main Street. It sounds like Wednesday we'll go and gravel again, so there might be some more trucks down Main Street, uh, for a few days. Again, hopefully the bridge is done, because I don't enjoy going down Main Street with all the other, that's backed up to decades, so. But anyways, thank you guys for your time.
Thanks.
Thanks for your, but, uh.
Okay, uh, moving on to item number three, Stan Jazinski with the nine eleven proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm the city council. Uh, my name is Stanley Jazinski, I'm the founder and chairman for the Western County Freedom Festival. And, uh, this year will be our, the festival's fifth nine eleven. But, uh, two years ago, nine eleven started, uh, taking place in the middle of the week and we wanted to say true to the holiday, so we separated the festival from nine eleven. And, uh, I was looking for a place to have that festival and, uh, I live up eighty-five, so not every day, or almost every day, I'd drive by Pinnacle Bank. One day I recognized the sign that, uh, that was, uh, the lot north of Pinnacle Bank is the future site for the Veterans Memorial. And, uh, I pray a lot these days and I thought my prayer was answered. And I reached out to the Veterans Memorial Committee last year and it was the first year we did it jointly, the Freedom Festival and the Veterans Memorial. So this year, uh, last year, we had a wonderful event and we hope to do, approve on it if that's possible. Really, I mean that sincerely, because, uh, the program was, was, was wonderful, wonderful. And, uh, we are doing some things a little different this year, or not, maybe tweaking things. So last year, Pinnacle Bank, so five to six is, uh, food and fellowship, uh, a lot of patriotic music and Pinnacle Bank does burgers, chips and drinks. Last year they served a hundred and forty-five burgers, so, uh, with all the feedback we got from last year and continued to pride up to now, we're, we're expecting between two hundred, two hundred and fifty people this year. And we've sent official invitations to all first responders in Western County and gave you all your, uh, official invitations. That was coming here was to invite you all to attend and to ask Mayor. He's agreed to do so, so we're excited for that. Our program ran from six to seven and, uh, like I said, it went really well. And, uh, so we're looking forward to doing it again this year. I just, uh, you know, one of the things that made, uh, when I came to understand that Veterans Memorial Committee could work in adjacent with us, I firmly believe that that memorial will be a gem in this community. I believe, uh, veterans groups will come from around the local region to see it. It's a beautiful design, it's all designed, it's already probably on my lap. They put, they put a flagpole up last week.
Best way to know the world is to read your local paper, and I'm gonna give you another hint, being a paper boy. When you get your local paper, like my mom used to do, put the front section away and go to the metro section. That's all the great dirt is. So you read the metro section, read the metro section, and you will start to become so much smarter than the kids that are just academically debating, right? It'll be common sense and street smart.
Really quick, last question, I gotta, we gotta welcome Secretary Noem.
So yeah, Kristi Noem was, was the next guest to take the stage there, but, uh, boy, again, I mean, none other than, than President Donald Trump is committed to a printed newspaper. I mean, as fan clubs go, I'll, I'll, I'll take that one, uh, in, in the whole, uh, modern political landscape. Donald Trump, Megyn Kelly, Steve Bannon and, and Charlie Kirk, at least in Wyoming, I guess. Those are some pretty powerful names supporting printed newspapers.
And that's gonna be part of our ceremony, uh, this year, we're gonna start off with a flag raising. But, uh, I firmly believe that it's a wonderful thing, that it's gonna be a benefit to the community and I, I, uh, I'd like to see it happen and will happen. So anyway, uh, I just wanted to give you all that information, uh, and invite you to join me and us, and if you have any questions, uh, I'll, I'll definitely answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Stan?
It starts at what time?
Did you have us all there?
Food and fellowship is five to six, so feel free to, uh, come and have a burger and listen to some music and visit with people. The program starts at six and runs roughly, like, the sound, maybe a little longer, some, but definitely six. And, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it was a wonderful event last year and will be in this year.
Thank you, Stan.
Well, thanks, thanks for giving the time, and I got other meetings, so I'll see you later, hope to see you there.
All right, moving on to citizens business and writing. Item number one, B O seven, smoking vape haven, twenty-four hour malt beverage sales permit.
I would also ask that we could get a relaxation on the open container law for that day as well.
Uh, did, did you include it in the, uh, in the request for?
It doesn't give, it doesn't give me a place to request that specifically on the paperwork.
Is that something that they, that we can approve tonight? And then the open container, sir, is it just in the area right in front of your?
Well, it would be for Main Street, within the barricaded area, yeah.
Within the barricaded area of Main Street? Okay, should we do that?
It's kind of a wish, isn't it?
Yeah, I would just do this first. Okay. Thank you, Max, but I just, I just repeat. Okay, so twenty-four hour malt beverage sales permit, uh, section twelve dash two dash two oh one, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcoholic Beverage Control Laws. In consideration of the sum of forty dollars paid by Nicholas Wyberg doing business as three oh seven smoking vape haven, um, uh, doing, uh, to sell malt beverages in and upon the premises of Main Street Newcastle, Wyoming, within the barricaded areas for an event more specifically described as follows, Madison Main Street. This license is for a catering permit, is for the term of one day only, beginning on the thirtieth day of August twenty twenty-five at zero nine AM through the thirtieth day of August twenty twenty-five at zero nine hundred AM. So, uh, does the council, um, entertain a motion? Uh, yeah, I did. Uh, the twenty-ninth day of August twenty twenty-five.
To the thirty?
To the thirtieth day of August at zero nine hundred AM, does the council entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four hour malt beverage sales permit to three oh seven smoking vape haven? So, yeah, we have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion, there's some discussion over there? Is there any discussion?
What's, uh, what's the actual sale of liquor going to take place on the street?
It would be in a, it, it would be a beer garden, it would just be a, uh, on and cover area where we would ID people and use wristbands. And it would be right there on the sidewalk on Main Street. Same way that we did it when we did the, uh, old school reunion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries here, uh, permit's approved.
Thank you.
And, uh, does the council entertain, uh, another motion to approve open container, uh, would it be for the same time period?
Yes, it would, it would.
We tell ten PM or something?
Yeah, noon to ten PM.
Yeah, noon to ten.
Noon to ten?
Four, yeah.
Okay, uh, open container from noon to ten PM, uh, within the barricaded area for the Madison Main event.
Does that call, I mean, that'll go with Madison Main's open container already, but we need to get that approved for the five to ten PM with our street dance and stadium. So that would overlap, we're completely separate open container.
Do we have a motion, we don't know as well, if you have, um, open container for the entire barricaded area? Oh, I think that's a motion, so, all right.
Here's the, um, special event that we got.
For Madison Main, usually five PM to ten PM with the street dance and community already.
We were just looking to have it relaxed a little bit more from the noon to the ten is what we were looking for. We aren't necessarily asking to supersede anything that they're doing. We're just looking for it to be relaxed a little bit more from noon to ten. So, so, uh.
So is it redundant for us to have multiple motions for each person? Uh, I, I think the, the way to do it, we didn't, I don't think it's required to have the, some sort of form, basically for it over. We already have the one, but I guess if the council's interested in amending it to noon to ten, in that way, you know, all the, you know, the businesses, basically, you know, that's just one of the things. So we'll relax it from noon to ten PM for the Madison Main event. So we just need an amendment to the motion, so. Okay. Okay. Does the council entertain an amended motion? Who made the motion for the event? I don't even remember. So could we just approve there? Relax her.
Have we approved Madison Main already?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, so why don't we change the amend the vape thing to say from noon to.
We haven't approved, you guys, as of now?
No, no, it's, it's. The events approved, we just have to approve the open container, so.
Okay.
Yes, that was separated.
Okay, there we go. And sorry, I'm up here jabbering. They should just be less than two, so. So you could just have a motion for ten, uh, or excuse me, noon to ten. So, council, do we have a motion to approve open container from noon to ten PM to cover a barricaded area, um, even on the side streets, right, that are listed in, uh, the Madison Main event?
And Madison, the, you know, or the, thirty, Saturday the thirtieth.
Okay, from noon to ten on the thirtieth.
Yes, we have a motion, just like you said.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to cover noon to ten PM in the barricaded area, um, on Saturday, August the thirtieth, for open container. We have a second, so, we have a motion properly seconded, is there any further discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries, we have open container on the third. Okay. Moving on to, uh, well, did you guys have anything further?
I got that. Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving on to whole business, uh, item number one, American Legal and Civic Plus, move. So council, I approached you at some of the prior meetings to talk about, uh, American Legal Publishing has given us a quote for like seventy-one hundred dollars to, uh, review our municipal code book and get rid of anything in there that was, uh, superfluous. So, uh, it had been brought to my attention that Civic Plus Uni Code also takes care of our, our municipal code books and are the ones that have handled it prior. So, um, they have recently come back with a quote for us. So the new, or the quote from, uh, from Civic Plus came in at fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy cents. But the, the prior quote from American Legal Publishing was only for six copies of the, uh, municipal code handbook. So that would put each copy at one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per copy. Whereas Civic Plus had, um, gave us their quote for the fifteen thousand and some odd dollars to, uh, um, create twenty-five copies. So that would drive the cost per copy down to six hundred and five, uh, seventy-five per copy. The, uh, the thing is, is, uh, all of us on the council need a copy of the book, ladies in the office need a copy of the book, and then we also provide a copy of the book for our officers. So it would behoove us to go with a larger quote, but also more copies of the municipal code book and still serve the same purpose. So would the council like a little bit more time to look at the quotes since this one just came in? And we could table this on the next meeting? Or would the council entertain a motion to go with one of the others to, uh, uh, go ahead and start going through our municipal code book and clean it up?
I, I don't think we table this until next meeting.
Okay, this is something that we might also be able to add to, uh, the finance committee meeting. So this could be another agenda item for that meeting. So do we have a motion to table? Do you have anything? Uh, do we have a motion to table the, uh, American Legal Publishing Civic Plus Uni Code discussion at the top of that council meeting?
I know, there is a question there.
Do we have a motion properly seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, we'll table it at the top of that meeting. Okay, uh, item number two, Rural Community Assistance Corporation. Emmy Remble came and presented for the council at the last meeting. Tonight, I would ask the council if, uh, you'd approve the fifteen thousand dollar match so we could further the HUD grant and move forward with the project. There's, uh, activities that are starting to come up in their timeline for this HUD grant, um, uh, year. And I, I think that they could provide us with some assistance in, um, trying to enhance and develop some community, economic development for our community. Does the council have enough time to review and amity consent and what are your thoughts on it?
Is this for the participation in the Water and Blood Commission Program?
No, this one was, uh, for the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, the lady that presented before our last council meeting.
Yeah.
So, tell us about that, what you would do.
So Amy had presented to us last council meeting, the HUD grant would provide for $15,000 matches for, uh, three years worth of service, um, in this project. Uh, it would, um, unlock $25,000 of matching funds from the HUD grant that they have available for us. That could, uh, fund a, uh, community coordinator for Newcastle that would be in charge of, um, you know, all the activities that are involved with the grant that she presented on.
Pretty much housing, isn't it, Mr. Mayor?
Um, that was like one of the aspects of it. There was also, um, training and entrepreneurship, uh, classes on, uh, on bookkeeping for businesses. There was a lot of, uh, business oriented and training to, you know, help enhance our business owners' skills for running businesses in our community. Um, and I, I'm pretty passionate and I think that it's a good deal for Newcastle and they, um, she was providing a lot of examples of communities that take help, um, you know, uh, across the region. There are 501(c)(3) non-crafted, um, and, uh, the, the terms of the HUD grant just require that, that we have some skin in the game. So, um, they're really good at what they do, they're very passionate about what they do, and I, I feel that it'd be a good endeavor for the city to engage here.
Is this, is this that $1,000 a year for the three years their only, uh, obligation to the city?
Yes.
Why don't we accept that our CAC program and then move forward with it?
The new store, this is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnut. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Do you, you want, um?
What, what exactly is this going to back up for the city?
Well, so, what did you take from the presentation, John?
That they want to hire a court paper boy. What's court paper boy gonna do? Are we gonna get grant money or are we gonna get back end, uh, backing for other projects or?
So, it's my understanding that what they're gonna do is they're gonna come to the community and they're gonna provide us with training for our business owners, training for the citizens that run with them. So that they can try to be entrepreneurs in our community, uh, give them ideas, like a toolbox of skills. So, this all comes to us for that $5,000 match, but then we're also getting $25,000 that we're gonna be able to provide a position to the city that's gonna be able to, uh, make sure all the activities happen, that the venues are available, uh, get the people together. Um, you know, do the activities that it's a part-time job, do the activities that we need to do to further the project work. So then she provided you a whole list of communities that they've helped, and they were able to leverage, uh, on average, between the communities that they, uh, they assisted, $1.3 million in grant funds through the course of the project. So, I, I think that we just, if the council's pleasure is to approve this, that we'll be able to have the folks come and work with us and then have them work their magic, like see what they're gonna bring to the community. So, I, I'm pretty excited about it because I thought the examples that she provided us were, uh, pretty huge, um, and, uh, I, I don't know, it just had to be a really good thing for our community. Do we have any further discussion?
Do we have anybody kind of in mind to take the fourth here?
I had somebody in mind, um, but the, the last discussion that we had, uh, that the council wanted to look into, you know, go out and put some feelers out and see if they had some, uh, folks that might be interested in the position. Um, I think the person that I have in mind would be a good fit.
Because I think that right there will be our, our maker great thing, you know, he'd be a good.
So if the council approves it, right, this is something that we can work on as things progress. There's still a little bit more paperwork that's involved with starting the project, and then they need to give us, um, an actual, um, agreement, an agreement that we would sign off on to get things rolling. So, tonight we'll just be showing our good faith and we're willing to engage in the project and, and try to, to do good work in Newcastle. I should have had Amy come tonight, she asked me this morning if she should come, and, and I, I think that she would have done a little bit better job of explaining. So we have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Lacy.
Listen, Mayor, I got a question, you said we're the 501(c)(3) that puts this program out. And you go after a grant, where does that grant come from?
So, yeah, they were already awarded the grant, it's a, it's a grant through USDA rural development. And, uh, the grant's already been secured and we were a candidate for that grant. But if, um, if the council isn't agreed to go forward with the project, then, then that grant money's gonna get spent somewhere else.
The grant goes away in the $5,000, okay. But that's an FBA.
Uh, USDA.
USDA.
Yep, I agree. Uh, rural communities, uh, block name is what it is.
We know more feelings over grounds.
Yep, yes, sir, Mr. Lacy. Okay, I'll ask the council by show of hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, uh, all those opposed signify by saying nay and raising your hand. Uh, motion carries. Thank you, council, we'll, uh, see how things progress and see if my, uh, spaghetti method is gonna serve our community.
It's gonna work, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Uh, thanks, council, moving on, uh, new business, item number one, RVs and mobile home district.
Ordinance number seven, it says.
Um, engineer Art had intended on being here and, um, he wasn't feeling well, so couldn't come to the meeting, but he said that a committee meeting had met regarding these mobile homes. Maybe remember that, not saying anything about it.
Was it, was it streets committee or was it, that was us? Okay. We, uh, discussed, uh, RVs that being able to park it in, in a mobile home as long as they were hooked up? And set up like a, a mobile, or a mobile home.
Oh, not a lot, for an RV, what, or?
A mobile home lot, it's okay, park the RV there, as long as it's hooked up like a mobile home.
So like hook the city services and hook it up to the sewer system?
Yeah.
Okay, what was the committee's recommendation on?
We recommend they, recommend that they pass, we pass it to allow it.
Okay. So would you make a motion on adopting?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we adopt RVs and mobile home district.
Order number seven, series 2025.
Stand, uh, ordinance number seven, series 2025.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor properly seconded, is there any discussion?
Sorry, we're seeing this guy, we don't have like a mobile home and like the water line and everything will be like copper. It won't be like garden homes, do there, do they have connections on a RV system than a mobile home? Most of the connections are underneath the mobile home versus RV. Well, it says it'll shall be installed and protects the integrity of the surface, is what it says. So that, that's up to our building inspector, because I'd like to protect the integrity of the surface.
And if Chuck was involved in writing this up, I'm sure that he would have presented this really well for the council. So if Chuck was, if Chuck was involved with drawing up this?
Yes, he was.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
So, can I ask where this came from?
Yeah, where did this come from, committee?
I'm not sure.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Lacy.
I'm a member of the planning commissioner, as you obviously know, I suppose, but we've had this in front of us for quite some time. We've visited and revisited and rehashed and hashed that and, and come up to the idea that it's something that needs to be done because of times of boom. People move in with their campers and if there's mobile home places, lots for rent, say, or somebody has a mobile home space for rent, that they could park there. Otherwise, we have no kind of camping facilities, like Nick Crawford has that mobile lot over by Marida. That's allowed to live there, and that would be other areas in town where mobile home districts are. And that was basically the thing we were talking about. Because Kathy's also a member of that.
So, a way to.
Forwarding the must do.
A way to utilize space that wouldn't otherwise be utilized for anything, because we set it there vacant.
Also keep them off the street, kind of problem with that, the vast where people would park in an area by their son's or mother's place, run holes. And power from the house to the RV and then live there on the street and not with.
Cousin Eddie's house. Cousin Eddie syndrome.
Pardon me?
Cousin Eddie syndrome.
Yeah, there you go.
This is bad camping, I'm planning this.
Okay, we'll table this. We were floundering, um, there's some verbiage in here that maybe says something about a public hearing. Chuck wasn't here to present this, I would recommend the council, uh, move it able to held the next meeting, hopefully Chuck's feeling a little bit better.
Stayed a while, we wondered, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, um, so we'll need to withdraw the motion, um, to accept ordinance number seven, series 2025.
I withdraw my motion on ordinance number seven, series 2025.
Okay. Um, the motion's been withdrawn, uh, we have a motion to table ordinance number seven, series 2025 until next meeting.
So move.
We have a motion properly seconded, is there any, oh, there's no discussion on table motions. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, we'll table it. Sorry, public for floundering here. Let's move on to item number two, under new business, uh, replat lots 21 through 24, block 11. Is this also something that Chuck was gonna present? I'm over the retable, I would ask for a motion that we table the, uh, next item, replat lots 21 through 24 of our block. Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a motion properly seconded, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, so we'll revisit that when Chuck's available next meeting. Uh, okay, we already tabled it. Moving on to, uh, committee council member reports, item number one, Wyoming Business Council and Harvard Growth Lab, uh, meeting. We, we have a follow-up meeting, uh, we were able to have quite a few members of council independents. The, uh, Wyoming Business Council basically gave us an overview of the, and the Harvard Growth Lab. There was a gentleman from Massachusetts and, uh, Harvard that was on the call. Um, they basically gave us an overview of the demographics in our area, um, and kind of rehashed some of the ideas that had been brought before them at the prior meeting. Um, I was a little bit disappointed with the way the meeting went. I thought that it was gonna come with more suggestions for things that we could do better in the community. I thought it was gonna give us some ideas, uh, but what it mostly pushed us, uh, towards is that the council rally and we start getting people in the community involved. And, um, we start to organize and come up with some ideas. So, they, they put a lot of it back on us. So, uh, it is something that, um, that I thought was gonna come with a little bit more information, but, uh, it, it didn't. And so now they're, they're kind of pushing it back on us, and some of the members of the, of the board, um, or the Wyoming Business Council, Connor, uh, that had worked with us in the past. He, he said that he would be more than happy to help us organize some groups, uh, in order to start working towards this. And this is, this is all stuff that if we, we start to identify these community members and we, and we find people in the community that are interested in trying to, um, revitalize economic development in our community. And this would also work for the RCAC project that we have going, so that the council just approved tonight. So, once we get these people identified, then, um, it's gonna help us further both projects. So it's just something that we're gonna need to do to, to rally the troops and, and get some people involved. So if you guys have citizens in mind, do you think would be an asset, we need to start getting them together and kind of communicating on this a little bit better to move forward. Uh, I thought they were gonna do a lot of the labor work for us, so. Does anybody else there have anything that they'd like to say about meeting and how it went?
Well, I was there and, and as you pointed out, that they put it, basically, they said they don't have any money, they don't have any way to help us, and they put it all back on us. Thank you Wyoming Business Council, you know, and, and we can start our own groups, maybe, you know, we started a group. I mean, it, it, it was a nice, uh, little televised meeting, but I didn't think anything came from it at all.
Yeah, I was a little disappointed as well. Anybody else have anything to add?
I was just asking John if he knew anything about the development, maybe, or whatever's going on up here.
Yeah. Cause John, you're a, you're a member of that board, right? Yes, we haven't met since, uh, we're, uh, we're waiting for everything to settle on for something. Okay, well, we'll, I'll be in communication and try to get something figured out before, and hopefully this RCAC study will, uh, um, will help as well. So if, if anybody else has anything to add, I'll move on. Okay, uh, item number two is EMS capacity study, uh, so Campbell County Health. Uh, so Campbell County Health had, uh, moved forward and gotten a grant to do a EMS emergency medical services capacity study for our county. Um, they asked some folks from the council to come and stay with them and let them know how they thought, um, things had been going with the U.S. service. Um, so, uh, Mr. Boss...